...was approved in January 2018. We can talk about it by Loco LLC, Phase Two of the Eastport development. Basically, the applicant in this instance, you recall that when approvals were first granted, it was a mixed use. It was commercial first floor residential on floors above. The applicant, and there's now been a change in our development regulations to allow all residential in this area. The applicant was applied for, and has received preliminary approvals. I don't think they would be technical, but they would request for a waiver. I think in this instance, it was so difficult to do that. But basically, now the applicant wishes to do all residential. The cumulative effect will be that there are going to create three residential units in each of the buildings for a total of six residential units. My understanding is now that will bring the total of the residential units in all buildings to sixteen. The applicant submitted his development application. There are some technical waivers, but I don't want to have everybody confused. I imagine we'll hear from the applicant. They've technically requested a waiver from store board management. He had a cardinal impact statement. You recall that those were given to you, or at least for this property. At least remarking earlier, the exhibits, the manwatch surveying engineering did the stormwater, that was exhibit A4, and cardinal impact statement was A3. But I imagine what we're going to hear from the applicant is not to redo all those things because basically, my understanding is the footprint has not changed. The design of the building has not changed. It's really what's occurring on the inside and whether or not that will impact on any of the approvals that you granted before. Obviously, now residential with this commercial, what is the impact of that? How does that impact parking? Will that impact any trash enclosure, et cetera, et cetera? We do have a review letter from our engineer, Mr. Dineshia. He's highlighting a couple of things that we'd like to see addressed. I imagine the applicant will receive these and will address these. One of the things that the engineers suggest is that how many units are, how many bedrooms are there? That's a good cross-check to make sure that there is adequate parking at the site. Find out what's no longer there as a result of not having it developed as a commercial area. I don't think the gazebo is still there. I think there are now more areas where there's planting. There's not as extensive pavers. Now, the green areas, we would like to confirm the exact building height and number of stories. There's been a suggestion by the engineer that the trash enclosure, which is on the west side of the property, that way to develop the block, should be complimentary to the site. It shouldn't stick out like a sore thumb, I think is what he suggested. So, I guess the loading zone on the eastern side of the property, there appears to be a difference in elevation that the engineer wanted to have addressed, and whether or not the impact on public access path. The engineer indicates to address how the loading, what occupants of the western building will be handled, and whether it is intended also for the use of the adjacent property, which may necessitate an easement. So I think you have one loading area, I don't know if there's another loading area on the other, I don't know if it's needed, which here is something from the applicant. Also, that the loading area is designated also as a fire lane. Should have some idea as to how, what the science is, what the striking is going to be for that. Indication as to how plantings at the site will be maintained, what's the long-term plan for maintaining the plant until it will be placed there? What type of amenities are they going to be now that it's all residential, will be anything else out there? It looks like the pavement on the back is an indication, I believe in the engineer, that there seems to be some kinds of structures across the back in addition to fencing, which was already there. As to what those structures are, what the purpose of them, and if you want to go forward with bases. I guess the applicant should provide testimony also as though an easement be provided on the western portion of the site where the river walk, center walkway needs to be existing steps. What type of signage will we be to allow for public access on the riverwalk? Will it be signage indicating residential property is private property, ID at the front and rear steps, and the courtyard to discourage public from cutting through this area? There's a reference as to where air conditioning units will be placed to confirm where they're building, located on the site for both of the structures. There's a reference to this site where there's, I guess, adjacent freezers. It looks like it's off-site, but it may be some encroachment onto the property. Confirm where those adjacent freezers are, whether or not there's an encroachment, and if so, how that will be handled. Declaration of the here for part, please. I don't know that that has been done at this point in time. I could not see any bearing to that effect. Basically, it's really just changing that first floor, getting a little more detail as to what it is, by way of doing the bedrooms, probably the height, or reorganization. There is a lighting plan that's indicated in there. There's still a section in the, on the documents that refers to a food deck area. That would make lots of sense if you're still going to have restaurants there, want to find out whether or not that's something that's going to go forward. If so, what it's going to be used for, how it's going to be developed, or whether that should be struck. As I say, any type of outdoor amenities. There was a redevelopment plan that had been initially scoped with the governing body. I don't know the status of that. We should find out what the status of that is. There are some specific additions in Article Five that require the placement of power lines to be installed underground. Making sure that the borough storm drain will be relocated, particularly following the requirement for easement for that, allows us to maintain that. And from the completion of the riverwalk. There had been a term originally, and we want to find out from the applicant as to where this is, and this is Article Five, 5.03 subsection D. Originally, you're going to have the commercial in the first floor. I don't think this was an issue, but it was that there was going to be a lease to the borough, mutually acceptable terms, a space containing approximately 1,000 square feet on the ground floor, in mutually acceptable location utilized by the Dunbar Arts Council. It says, "Or, if your views preferred by the borough, in the alternative, the redevelopment shall make available other space of equivalent size in another facility owned by the redevelopment in the borough for such use." Because they'll be containing the property, define, assess that, if it's not going to be, how that can be assessed, and whether or not that's still a condition of Article Five. As I say, we saw one that was marked up. I don't know what the final status of that is, but we should find that out. Also, as to residential parking, how that would be signed. We've got a number of spaces in the front. It looks like there's no need for variance, but you want to find out how that sign is going to be, what the proposed use is, because I think there were so many guarantees for residential, so many for other, basically, public parking. And I think two slots perhaps there included for railroad employees. And I think there's still a reference to that in the paper. We have something like 28 dedicated to residential, two spaces railroad, two handicap, and two public or prisoners. And how will that be handled? Will it be signage here? Is there going to be signage on the depiction of that and interiors? It's pretty straightforward applications, mostly, I would say, fine-tuning some of the details, making sure the teams are close to that. It does not look like there's any variance required. At least, there's none being requested. We've got a computer team to identify and give a report. So I think it's pretty much your standard site plan, something that you guys are geared up for, just moving through it, to say, does this make sense in our current plans going ahead? That's your application. Any questions? Comments? Concerns? Okay. We'll close that portion of the meeting.
One of the things I wanted to discuss with the board, this is an issue that came up at our last meeting and several times throughout the past eighteen, twenty years. We have situations where, here in an application, we get almost through the application, and we get to a certain point, maybe board comments, maybe public opinion, and the applicant decides at some point that they want to carry the application based on, based on knowing the turnout, which is usually negative. Nothing to be decided today, but I'm just asking the board to start thinking about this. Maybe we can establish a, some kind of protocol or procedure where, and this is open for discussion, where at some point in the meeting, maybe prior to board comments, we said, once board comments are taken, well, then you cannot vote that in an application. I know we had one situation a few months back where we forced the applicant to vote. We've had other situations, we allowed them 60 days, and in the past, last month it was 90 days. But I'm just wondering if the board's in the middle of establishing some kind of, some procedure where, when we do that kind of thing. Maybe you think, maybe you think there's no need for establishing another procedure, but I'm just asking to think about it, formulate your ideas, maybe come back next, next meeting, and we can vote that further. Does anyone want to mention anything now?
I can give you a historical perspective. One of the things I'm good for around here is institutional memory. Just feel like to be able to lock this figure. Years ago, when we had a combined board, you had your zoning and planning together, certain applications required five votes. One of the reasons, I think, we went back to separate meetings, because sometimes it was, it was hard to get a full complement, but depending on the relief that you needed, you needed five firm votes. Sometimes we had enough for four, we had six. But knowing you had to sort of do a, almost double the Hall of Fame in baseball record, you had to really get, you had to convince everyone. Out of fairness, we allowed the applicant, maybe to carry, allow people to listen to applications, and then take that vote on later day. Sometimes it also resulted in the applicant coming back, having heard from us, readjusting and amending their application a little bit without having to go through the cost and expense of having to re-submit things. There's certainly, there's not hard and fast case law on this. You have the discretion to do that. You have heard some comments about it in the last meeting where people came out, they wanted their decision, they wanted to have something heard because they've taken the time to come out and voice their opinion. You can balance the equation on any number of, I think in the long run, what's happening with the board. I mean, you had allowed people to carry their application, they've taken board comments, listened to them, taken them to heart, and a lot of time to see a realized application. You can also take it to vote and have the applicant have to re-submit their entire application and come forward. So I think it started out as, as a practice for a board that no longer exists. We sort of carried that forward.
I like the idea of us relooking at that. I think, you know, we talked after that last meeting, didn't we? I think it's a good idea, because people do take time out of their schedules, they come out and spend two hours here, and in the essence of fairness all around, I think, I think it's best that we come up with some guidelines that we stick by.
It may just be a shorter timeline, so people want to have to remember. You can do it that way. I don't, I guess there's really two issues that you might want to grapple with if you're going to try to establish a policy, and even have that put in our rules and those kinds of things. We have some informal things that we're not going to start at the beginning, we're going to do the next amount of time, or, you know, we'll start, we won't pass a certain time, we won't start a new application after a certain hour. We have some procedural rules that we follow. I think there are really two issues that you have to grapple with. You know, at what, if you're, if you're going to allow someone to carry their application to commit it, at what point in your meeting do you do that? Do you wait for after-board comment? And if you do that before and after, how long do you want an applicant to carry that? That's, we, we do have some genuine issues there because the life of the board hypothetically exists for one year. Technically burdening the other, the other board. So technically, you might want to take a look at those two issues, whether you want to continue with them, or maybe consider whether you want to continue that. You have an application at night unless there's some reason to have an informal control of carrying, because they have to bring back more information. So now we're going to run into all of that.
So, okay, but when we put that on the agenda for our next meeting under the workshop schedule?
Sure.
For discussion, let's think about it for the next month, and, you know, if you think it has merit, you know, bring your ideas to the table, and we'll see what we can come up with, if any. Okay? I guess we'll run through the regular meeting. First order of business is approval of minutes. Everyone has received, has had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last regular planning board meeting on September 17th. After our new corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So, no.
Is there a second?
All of them.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Stain.
Mr. Rieger?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Next is the mortuization of resolutions. There are none. So we'll go into our first application, and as a Loco company LLC seeking to amend a previously approved site plan for a proposed mixed-use structure on Little Road, known as Eastport, Phase Two, double out the entire project, we change the wall, thus eliminating the first floor commercial use. Gentlemen?
Can we have this one to testify? I think you might have something to say, and ask this to raise your hand. Some sort of testimony for the word of the chief of office. Yes, state your name for the record, and your first call, on spelling your best name with all directions of the council. And I have this for housekeeping purposes. I have a development application that appears to consist of some 16 pages. Your commission, I'd like to mark that as A1. I have a site plan consisting of some nine sheets, the latest revision date of April 24, 2018. Your commission, I'd like to mark that as A2. And I also have, oh, I see you have a board. I know that was marked previously, maybe we should mark that again. That's A3, the new teaser, proposed renderings of the structure. Mark that as A3. I don't know if there's a date on that or not. I don't know that that's necessarily important for a date. And then we have an engineering letter, October 19, 2018, consisting of some five pages. Mark that as PV1. I'm handed the first amendment to the redevelopment agreement. It looks like it is final. Appears to be signed, and has a date. Have a date? As, it looks like we have various signatures, July and August at least being signed by the redevelopment. Would you like to have that marked as an exhibit also?
Yes.
Okay. Have that marked as A4. Do you have a copy of that available? I have the first amendment applying version 1.1. Share with you the... Sign. What is yours?
I'm a attorney for over the active right now, Wolf. As your counsel has indicated, this is the application of Loco Co. LLC. It's an application for amended preliminary final major site plan approval, again with a couple of requests for waivers. This is Phase Two of the Eastpoint project, zero eight-three acre site, frontage on River Avenue, it's in the seat for a village redevelopment zone. The resolution granting preliminary final major site plan approval was approved by this board on January 8, 2018. At that time, the application consisted of first floor of each of two buildings commercial, second and third floor being residential. I'd like to emphasize that the building has three floors, a ground floor and two residential floors above that, because the engineer's report indicates in a couple of places that it's only two stories. It's actually three stories. Each footprint is approximately 4,050 square feet. They indicated the prior approval, 1818, was for commercial on first floor. Since then, the borough council has amended the ordinances relating to the redevelopment zone, so that has to permit residential on the first floor rather than that first floor. And that's what this project, or this application consists of, which is a conversion of the first floor to residential. There are originally a total of 10 units, and spread across the two buildings, this will bring in an additional six units. The borough council adopted the ordinance prohibiting the conversion of the approved commercial space to residential on the first floor on 8/21/18. We have the engineer's letter from the borough. Our client would like to go over it point by point. I'd like to indicate that the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement, Article 5.03, which your council read into the record during the workshop section, indicates the obligations of the developer in relation to power lines, storm drains, the riverwalk. Section D is intentionally omitted. I believe that's the paragraph that included the space for public purposes, as to remove street lighting in subsection D. And after, refers to the easement for the municipality for the pump station structures. And our client is, has signed that agreement many months ago, and is intending to, in all respects, comply with its obligations to the municipality and its obligations to the board. The board will permit me, and I'd like to have both Mr. Capalco and Mr. Yurusi stand up here by the microphone, because each one of them might have a different perspective on each of the individual items set forth in the report of the municipalities or this board's engineering.
Is that mic working? Would you like to stand up by the microphone?
This recording is not projected.
Just to remind, gentlemen, just to state your names, spell your last name, purpose of record, and realize that that does not project, so I'm going to ask you to keep your voices up. It will record what you have to say, but it does not project from the folks of your audience.
Brett Yurusi, Y-A-R-U-S-I.
And Greg Capalco, K-D-L-T-A.
Each of you have in your hands a copy of the engineer's report to this board dated October 19, 2018. Is that correct? And we're going to go down paragraph by paragraph on the comments that start at the page 205, start with paragraph 01, which requests testimonies supporting the requested change and present the basis therefor. I think it's pretty obvious what the application is, the conversion of first floor of each of two buildings for commercial residential. Is that correct? And what is the reason for requesting that the municipality make that change in the redevelopment?
Originally, we were approved, we were approved for the mixed use, but with the current situation, the borough felt that the only business that would really be successful in that area is a destination because of the, of the height of the, of the, we would have to raise it to comply with the flood zone, and it would have had to been a bar restaurant between the Marina and Ollie Clines, and the developments that's happened on Fifth and Main. We felt that for the borough at this point in time, from a parking standpoint, we had enough on-site parking to accommodate the residential, and we just probably didn't, we didn't need another restaurant in this town at this time. And from a rateable standpoint, we also thought it would, would be good for everyone around to have, to be permanent condos on the site.
Not think of it. It would just traffic situation would really, you know, limit the craziness that's taken place over there. Be a little, I, I feel it'd be very stable. I mean, residential versus commercial and between Ollie and Marina, I just think it really still a decent town over there, rather than us doing two restaurants or one restaurant at the site.
So from your standpoint, you view this change to be in the public interest, is that correct?
Yes. And that changes in the public interest because there is now a limited number of people coming and going to and from these units during the course of the day, as opposed to the more numerous group of people that might come to commercial establishments, particularly at nighttime, for a bar or a restaurant. Is that correct? Correct. Note number two is just a comment that the engineer defers to the board's obstruction department for further review, so we skip that. The architectural plans and elevations should be submitted and presented, which are, is shown, the elevation shown on that exhibit is on the tripod. If any questions, the architect is here, and he can respond to any questions involving what has changed, if anything, of the site. Based upon the ordinance requirement, this 32 part is based on our required, you're proposing this 30, is that correct? Correct. Two of those are reserved for railroad employees, they support spaces for guests.
It is, but as far, as far as those two spaces, we, you know, we never plan to dedicate them for them. We're making them available to them, they aren't for spaces, but there'll be no signs indicating that. So anything that's not going to be marked for a tenant space, we have no problem sharing that there.
And then the board engineer raised questions about how will the residential spaces be identified and reserved? Is that with signage or, and/or with striping in the street?
At this point in time, we, what we plan on doing is we plan on marking each space with residential parking, so each space would say, you know, resident unit one, resident two, and we also plan on posting signage up every, so many feet, letting that the public know that those spaces are private property and those spaces belong to, you know, the residential tents. Similar, similar to what, similar to what neighbor Barry Peck did on his property across the street, he has, he has his commercial spaces designated, which we will not have anymore, and all his resident parking spaces are mainly designated for the tents.
How many bedrooms are on the first floor units?
All the, all the, all the units, all the units have two bedrooms. The first floor units are approximately 1,300 square foot, 1250 to 1,300 square feet. Each one have two bedrooms.
And also, two bedrooms in the, in the top unit for the duplex?
The multi?
Yes.
Yes.
There's an issue or a question on the trash recycling for the residential units. How will that be handled?
We have, we have a garbage area at this point in time, which is located closer to the railroad tracks. It has a gate at this point in time. We will be, we will be enclosing it on both sides with the same, same block that we plan on using on a retaining wall, which is going to use to elevate the, to use to elevate the site as a whole. The site has to come up almost three feet, so, so that will be done in there. And now that it's going to be all residential for 16 residential units, we'll either have, we'll either have two three-yard containers for trash and one for second street recycling, which will easily fit, because right now, we will have Ollie Klein use that site, he's had four or five, six to eight yard containers in there. So, so what we plan on putting in there should be at the most, you know, three, three yard containers.
Will those containers be dedicated solely to the residents of your buildings?
Yes.
It's actually a pretty big closure, too. And I think we're going to coordinate the setup of the building for the dumpster, including the gate.
Correct.
Yes.
Note number five, the last sentence states, "A depressed curb should be shown along the..." the front of the trash enclosure."
Um, yeah, it's not a problem for us when we get to that point to depress the curb and make that work. At this point though, it hadn't really been necessary because the trucks that basically have come in to this point, there are the overheads which lift it. Once we put the roll-offs three yards in, you're going to need a press curve because when the garbage picks up, they're going to have to roll it down, so that's going to be completed.
Paragraph six here, the drive which is block wall and the gate for the enclosure. Number seven refers to the loading zone along the easterly property line. It appears that the loading area is approximately three feet below the building's finished floor elevation. Can I add on this?
Yeah, that's correct because we had to raise the site for the flood elevation. But originally, it was loading zone when it was going to be commercial. There'll be no loading zone for the site being it's all residential. There'll be no loading zone. That'll just pretty much be a fire lane. And we'll indicate that when we line strike it, we'll go over with the engineer and we'll come up with whatever the borough here wants us to do on that.
And fire management.
And fire.
There's a comment also in paragraph seven that the loading zone may have some impact on the public access pass. Could you address that note?
That load, well, that driveway currently is fifteen feet, fifteen feet between the retaining wall we're going to have on the easterly side of our property and to Ollie Klein's kitchen. There is going to be a five-foot walkway, if you look at your plans, just to the east of the sidewalk retaining wall, which will be one of the three access routes we're putting in for the Riverwalk. There'll be a ten-foot driveway which will become the fire lane and all will basically be at ground level, the current level it's at at this point in time.
Is there any intention to utilize any portion of your property for adjacent property?
No.
And the airport is not deep for an east, is that correct?
No.
The loading zone is also identified as the fire lane. The applicant should address what signage and striping will be utilized to designate that zone as a fire lane?
Well, I guess we'll bore they with the fire lane. Bring with the marshmallow.
Yeah, we'll agree with that.
Whatever state requirement, you know, that they state that the borough should ask for. So we'll just give whatever requirements or need to come.
Note number nine refers to the inverted elevations and slopes of the proposed relocated storm piping manholes. That's a request that that be added to the plans. Any problems with that?
That's not a problem.
Number 10, the applicant shall testify regarding the landscaping plans implanted as to maintenance for the plant materials. Now, as a result of this conversion from commercial residential, there were certain aspects of the prior plan that were purely commercial in nature, such as an outdoor patio, such as a dining area. What's going to happen to those features now that the project's already?
On the westernly side of the building, which was, if everyone looks at their plan, there was a large paper area that went from the westernly side that went to the corner that's over by the railroad tracks. Okay, that will no longer be papered through. It was originally gazebo there. That's coming out and that's going to be completely like grass and planter area that's going to be there. So we will be removing all of the papers that were there. When you look at the northern side of the building, what you see is there's some blocks that are there. Each of the units on the second floor have a deck, so that is actually going to be the footing of the post where the decks are. So all the area between the decks and the building will belong to the, you know, will belong to the residential tenants on the ground floor. Then, in the middle of the project, we added a walkway to another entrance/exit to the Riverwalk because the Riverwalk extends the entire northernly section of the property along the waterfront. So people that are utilizing the Riverwalk will be able to go there three different ways. One, they'll be able to use the paper walkway we're putting in on the north end next to the fire lane. Secondly, people will be actually able to walk through the middle of the project, okay, and down the stairs if they choose to. Or we're putting a cinder walkway to the westernly portion of the project that people will also be able to come that way to. Cinder similarly used by the Borough down by the park over by L P B. So people utilizing the Riverwalk will have like three access points to get there. Again, this property will have a retaining wall approximately three feet in height along the entire project. And that would designate the difference between the condo association's site and the Riverwalk. The property that's directly to the north of the Riverwalk, most of that property belongs to Ollie Klein. You know, at this point in time, he does have some walk-in coolers on that site. You know, we will be discussing with him to see if we can get him to locate them to actually a different spot on this property. But as long as he's permitted to put them up there, we can't actually force him to take them down to not on our property. But from a view standpoint, it's really more in the northeast corner of the property and where a couple of his walk-ins are. So again, you know, we're going to work with Ollie to see if we can get him to do those.
Would you like to please, at paragraph 11A, ask the question, "Will there be an easement provided along the westernly portion of the site for the Riverwalk, cinder walkway leading to the steps?"
Well, my question was to see who will be an easement.
Well...
Doc?
The question, probably I'm getting conservative in it, was that the easement being given or granted to the public?
And Borough?
The Borough, but it's not a condition of your approval. It's just a question. Did you intend to do that? Like, yes, you probably did.
We hadn't really thought about it, but we actually put in the Riverwalk so we didn't realize it would actually be necessary. I know the Borough needs an easement for the pumping station, but because the pumping station is Borough property. But, you know, it's not something we plan on doing. It's something that was there. But it's not a really big deal.
If the Borough should ask for one, it's not a problem.
Just to repeat what you said, if the Borough were to ask for an easement for the public, you would not object to that?
That would be a problem.
Some paragraph 11B refers to signage. Do you intend to put signage noting that what's the public access as opposed to what's private property in subsection C?
Well, we'd like to get a little, I guess, a little information from the Borough, what they would, I guess, our attempt would be, or are we satisfied with the Borough?
We would not have a problem sitting down-
A little guidance for the Borough, if you want us to set that up.
We don't have a problem sitting down with either a representative from the planning board or the Borough administrator to come up with some sort of signage led to the public. I mean, there's no signage down there. And it's kind of a cluster over there at this point in time with the demo that's going on and whatnot. And the public has had no problem finding it. But after we do these improvements, there probably should be some sort of signage inside Riverwalk with an arrow pointing in.
The authority gives the rush on it. We wouldn't have a problem with it.
Joe, you're talking about the question about, I think, directional signage. That's good for the public. You made a comment on your-
So, Jordan, if you could, just one minute.
Again, state your names.
Joe Venecia. So there are currently three different means of accessibility.
Yes.
One to the right side of the site, one on the easterly side that has an easement near Ollie's. That's the proposed public access in the shared fire lane. That's good. The other way seems to be somebody could potentially walk between the buildings up to steps through the corridor. It's up to both the applicant and the board whether that's desirable. If I live there, perhaps residents may not want people walking through their property. I think that's something that should be discussed, whether that's desirable or not. They also show a third means on the far left-hand side, the westernly side, where the Riverwalk's cinder walkway. A good idea, absolutely. However, would somebody technically be trespassing, perhaps, if they were to walk that way? So I think those are some of the issues that probably need to be hashed out and brought to light here. I think we tend to certainly work with the applicant on signing it appropriately, directing the public, whichever way the board does decide, the applicant decides. I thought that you may not want people through the middle, but I think that's something that should be discussed.
Well, just in general, I think people will probably walk through that anyway. And if the association, I'll have to show it, so I'm sure that. I've built a lot of community developments, I don't know. And even Westport that we built over on, you have said, I mean, people walk through that all the time. So it's not like we're going to give this up if we want to go. Even the post signs saying, "Cinder walkway."
I don't think we have a problem of creating easements to the east and the west. You know, it's our full intention to have that area go through the middle. But again, once we get beyond a certain point, the condo association is really going to be a deciding edge on that. I mean, the problem with permanent easement in the middle at this point might be, again, you're not going to want, you know-
They're not asking you to walk through the courtyard.
Yeah, the courtyard, we're going to put the staircase here. Because again, the condo, people, the people that are developing- They're going to want to get that through. You know, again, we plan on putting free, I mean, we definitely give easements for two for sure.
Just for purpose of record, so I understand, Mr. Yarusi, if you were to carry, move north sort of from Park and Stoll number 28. Is that where you're talking, going up to the ramp?
Correct.
And it seems like there's a fence between the planter area and the grasses and then another walk area with grass. Is that happening?
Yeah, it's not grass. It's going to be cinder. And I think there might be a slight error. Looks like it's a benefit area. There'll be a five-foot walkway between our raised elevation and the, I guess, the raised bulkhead in front of the railroad area. And again, we also wanted to keep the area open. That Borough was sort of been almost like an easement type of a pathway because right now, that's the way that the guys that work on the bridge, that's the staircase that they use to, you know, and bring stuff in the repair. So, you know, we didn't want them walking through the condo site. We wanted to maintain a certain level of what they currently have at this point in time. So that's why we moved the project about five feet off there. Originally, we were going to go right to the property line, but we moved the five feet off that line, you know, to give access to the public and access to the people who work in, you know, for Jersey Transit, you know, to utilize that area.
You take each one of your statements. There's no fencing between the area that's marked as grass and, here's the area here. You've got this area that's marked grass. You think that's going to be cinder?
That'll be cinder. That'll be cinder the whole way. And actually, it comes around this, this property right here, this property beyond our raised-
To the north of the retaining wall.
This property here belongs to the Borough. This is Borough property where it says grass out here, okay? That's Borough property and basically that'll be cinder too. So they'll be able to come here, take the cinder walkway down and then this is the paper gateway that comes down.
This line here that appears to be a fence line, that's not going to be a fence line?
Well, yeah, there'll be, well, there'll be a fence line off it, you know, raised. Because the grass area is still raised. It's not a gravel. There's going to be a retaining wall along the whole line. So the grass area is raised, same height as this, but there'll be a retaining wall the whole way. That's the whole line of the way. So people will be able to walk between the retaining wall on one side and then the Jersey Transit's bulkhead on the other side. So there'll be, again, a five-foot walkway in two locations.
So the elevation where the cinder is, is going to be at approximately what elevation to the top of the planter wall?
Well, the cinder walkway will be the current elevation, which, whatever grade is, I think it's an A grade or something. And I believe we're like 11, 11 and a half grade for the other manual.
Another three feet higher than the top or two?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
While we're on that issue, there is one other question that I did have to the north of structure one. You have a five-foot line of public access. Perhaps any point in the plan is going to be easiest. And then it turns, how the property line jogs out, there's a grass area. It needs to be shown on the plan and also the papers should mimic whatever that five-foot area is. And I wondered whether people would be cutting across.
Well, the reason we did that is this is the Riverwalk that apparently comes up and it actually ends right here under the cinders. So again, you know, we wanted to give them two ways. If we put grass or make this a planer or something for this effect in this area, they'll be able to either choose to, you know, not walk through the planer that's going to be here or the grass area, they'll be able to take the cinder walkway around or they'll be able to take the paper walkway.
I understand. So it continues there?
Right, this is the Riverwalk. And we would have brought it straight, but we don't own the property. Now, if we can talk to Ollie Klein about allowing him, and he may be amiable to do this, we could make it straight. The only reason it goes this way, we don't own the property there. So we matched the property line.
Understood. Okay.
Note number 12 refers to a location of the AC unit for unit number two. Do you address that comment?
I, that's, it's on the plans.
Those are designated with AC, either the far east or the far west or the-
Right, that's what they did. The design units are shown on almost every sheet. I don't know. It was missed, but they're there.
Paragraph 13 refers to the Jason freezer. Is that the comment you were addressing earlier in your testimony?
Again, looking at the site plan submitted, the big freezers that are connected to the north of our easterly building are definitely on Ollie Klein's property. But I think what the engineer was referring to, it looks like one of Klein's units probably is on our property by, I don't know, a foot and probably been there for 20 years. Again, we're going to ask him to move them, but it's not on our property. The one that's a foot on our property, again, it would be a big expense for Ollie if the Borough forces this to, or tells us how to move it a foot, we will do it. You know, it wasn't a big deal to us, so.
It's like the annual rental of shrimp.
Yeah, no, it's, again, it was there before we owned the property. That's how long that one, the walk-in box, is there. So again, it's there. Again, it's not blocking anybody's use from the building. It's tough in the corner there. So to me, I was impressed with him to move it unless the board felt they had to go and we would then force him to move it a foot, which would be a great expense for a foot.
Paragraph 14 states that in relation to the application last year, you provided an environmental impact statement. You are asking for a waiver of redoing that, is that correct?
No, it's changed. We definitely asked for it.
Paragraph 15 refers to comments with the police department, fire department. We haven't seen that. Is that correct?
We haven't, but we did meet with the police department prior to our phase one. They came out when we put the entire streetscape, including the parking. We actually had to demolish the island and create a safer walkway from where sixth and fifth meet at the corner where Ollie Klein's- where, where Klein has the parking lot across the street. So our entire parking layout, when it was going to be first salt and then when it was going to be mixed use, we met on the site with the police department, and the final parking, and nothing has changed since we put that parking in quite a while ago. So when it was going to be mixed use, so nothing's changed, and we did meet with the police, and nothing much is going to change for the existing parking that's here at this point in time. So we met five years, six years, five years ago, at least, on the parking with the police department.
They can ask us just to realign the crosswalk. And at that time, we had to, like Greg was saying, had to do a little bit more infrastructure, had to remove some items and then replace them.
Project 16 refers to a comment relating to a minor revision of the plan. Do you have any objection to making any of those revisions? You have a capital permit, is that correct?
We have a capital permit, but, you know, we have a capital permit in hand, we have a freehold soil conservation permit, and all the other permits that we need, once we get our approval, we will try to get everything done, submit as quickly as possible.
I have no further questions for these witnesses in relation to the review of the report dated October 19, 2018. As I've indicated, architect is here for any questions about the facade, the representation marked by that nothing is changing on the facade that was shown to us four years ago, is that correct? Yes. I have no further questions.
No more presentations, huh? I'm opening up the board's questions, comments?
I just have a question, I guess, for the architect for the facade. How are the windows going to change on the first floor with residential units instead of big windows for commercial use?
Brian Rzynski.
B E R Z I N S K I S.
The board has previously acknowledged this architect as an expert in the field of architecture.
Thank you very much. So actually, when we, when we had designed this, the window and door layout did not change from the residential to commercial use, primarily because a lot of the entranceways with the doors that you're seeing on that rendering that's picked up on the ground floor level are actually entrances to the vestibules that then have the elevator and stairway that bring you up to the upper units. So all those doorways that existed for the commercial use were kind of there for the residential use anyway. There is still side entry access to the residential units, as well as on the opposite side of the building, patio access for them to go out and use that patio space. So really, overall, the entire aesthetics that are there that were presented last time, it hasn't changed from the commercial to residential use.
So what we're looking at in that rendering, like, can you say, southern and eastern elevation?
Correct.
Refresh our notes, I mean, I forget when you were here last.
Yes.
But talk about colors, schemes, things of that nature.
Well, I mean, I think we've, I believe we're still in discussions about colors, but the general overall aesthetic was to create some type of, you know, lower foundation structure, whether it be a stone or a brick in the air, that transitions up into a mixture of potentially two different, you know, siding materials, a little bit of a shake, a little bit of a popboard, with your typical shingle-style roof. So it's just, you know, it's a mixture of a little ominous to help break it up, but at the same time, you know, remain cohesive as being one building. When we designed the little gestations in the elevation, intent was on the upper floor for the residential units. You'll see, it almost looks like there's five different segments, because there's five different residential units going across there. The ground floor level always kind of remained the same way, because those, you know, like I said before, those vestibules already existed, and the residential units that are accessed are either from the sides or from the front, and the rest of what's on the opposite side is basically just their outdoor patio space, so.
Just one last thing.
Yes.
Tell us about the lighting plan for the exterior of the building. I mean, what's going on the building and what's going on the building?
That I actually do not know.
There is a lighting plan that's been submitted by the applicant, page. Maybe it should be for the area.
Yeah, I can tell you from the building perspective, you know, whenever we're doing any construction outside of every residential doorway, whether it be the access where they enter into their units, whether it be the access off of the patios, there will be lighting there. I mean, that's just something that we always do. So coming out of any doorway on the streetscape side, side elevation there, and on the patio side on the opposite end, there will be lighting on the building itself for the residential use. And I assume the engineer's plan reflects more of what's happening on the property, as far as lighting the perimeter around it.
That appears to be the lighting plan showing that the building itself, the area, the streetscape, walkway.
Okay, check. What else?
I have a couple of questions if I may.
Oh, that's all right.
The architect, the structures that I'm pointing to appear, these appear, I think, which are probably where the C D block for, what are these structures, sort of a ghost bar?
Yeah, so what's occurring, and this is part of the other application as well, when we had the first floor, ground floor, commercial use, there was going to be exits out of that ground floor on the Sharp River side. And the second and third floor residents, the ones that are on these upper units, we're going to have balconies that come out of their units to have a little bit of outdoor balcony space. So those blocks that are representative along the Sharp River side are basically the footings and the columns that are supporting the balcony. Now, with the change to the residential use, the paper walkways that exist, that were there for the commercials, will remain, because now the residential units on the ground floor will have access, and that will be their patio space, protected overhead by the balcony space of the upper units.
Do you have a depiction of a northern elevation to show, or at least give us dimensions, or some idea of the scale of those areas?
No, but they can be displayed.
Yeah. How far were your decks going to extend beyond the building? Looks like it's ten foot to nine to eleven foot. Ten feet?
Yep.
Certainly, something.
Yeah, I believe it's to be around that.
When these arrive, that's going to almost be right up to the fence line, correct?
So what, where does that?
Well, I'm assuming you have a retaining wall here.
Yep.
You're going out, your deck, I'm assuming, is coming out of that wall.
Yeah, it would come to that point. It wouldn't go beyond that retaining wall, but it would basically come to that point.
Out of interest to the board to see the depiction of the northern elevation as to where the decks come out, what would the materials be for the construction of that?
Well, the original intention, I believe the current intention was still to use for the upper-level deck to be a carpalas deck, so that the original intent was that the ground floor can utilize it as a protected space.
Does that believe that would have made? Is there a breathing system on the exterior of that, obviously?
Yes.
They would not be moved, except for the, for the ground floor?
Yeah, only the ground floor would be covered by the one that's occurring on the upper level.
Okay. Would there be divers, I guess, on the second and third?
Right, so nobody can transfer over and somebody over here.
Is there any requirement? I'm trying to figure out whether or not we would need that. I don't know if that is. I don't, I guess in my reading, it wasn't clear until we found out what the, what this were. I didn't recall that testimony from the earlier, as to whether there'd been any testimony of the size of the decks and or whether or not we need variances for that. I have to take five minutes, turn to a research.
We'll leave back here, adjourn for five minutes?
Okay. And again, application, let's take a number of permutations. I don't have a recollection or a last resolution of addressing decks off the rear of the property, and what would be the, is the above the second elevation, third elevation, big deck areas. We do not seem to have a provision in the Seaport Village area that I can immediately find for a rear yard approachment to develop this type of structure. We do have, in our regular development ordinances, the ability to approach into the rear yard, and then within each one of those sections, and it's 47.8, and there is a table, and within that table, once again, there is no section that addresses the Seaport area. There is a general section that talks about not approaching further than six feet into the rear yard. At this point in time, it looks like what's being proposed by the applicant is approximately nine, plus ten feet. Depending on what the structure I go through, the units, it's not permitted or it shouldn't be allowed to approach greater than six feet into the rear yard. Try to use some more research on this, if you have, at this point in time, in the Seaport Village development area, it's not clear to have a vision for that. And Mr. Vizel is asking for a moment, I think as many as I want to talk. They got, they got a setback. They have setback, so the setback is some six to seven feet, right?
Do you have a meeting? He's already got some objection, he's not going to say that, that's right.
Possibly, this is the, this is the six to seven setback. Sixteen, sixteen forty, I'm happy with that. Farther if you were. So it's actually, I think, it's how far the depth of the use is. So we started to show that. Over in the front. And then you have there, it goes over.
That's your mother. Someone, you died.
So they're sixty.
They actually. They're standing on support. Now we need to talk.
We don't have a setback. But we're not supposed to have this side, because there is one close to the rest. So. That's a question. That can be wired. Not with this that I'm seeing, I'm using the other sections for that. My concern is that you may not be able to go greater than six feet. The notice I was following requested all variances are waived. Oh, I saw your notice, I'm confident in the proceeding, I think you provided adequate notice of those, you know, variances because the way this has come up. Do you want to address the record, though, with, I want to, you've made your presentation, I think we should be able to open the record before you make your presentation on the decks, which we really haven't addressed at this point, so we're going to have to benefit from that. I'm assuming you'd be asking for at least a four-foot increase in the approach mission to going six feet, because it looks like we're proposing that. If a variance is required, you are currently asking for that variance. Okay. Do you want to put on additional proofs as a basis for the variance? That's what I'm saying. With another question. Yes. I'm going to show you a copy of the site plan, this is how I'm going to approach with it. If you look at the site plan, what it is, the property widen as it goes east to west.
No, actually, widen, it goes, yes, east to west.
East to west, right, so that, and it's your intention to have these sort of the uniform, no respect, is that correct?
Correct.
So that if, for instance, a property owner, a unit owner, to the far west, has a balcony, for the aesthetic of the building, the unit owner to the far east would have a similar sized balcony, is that correct?
Correct, we like to match both buildings.
So to the extent that a variance is required, I'm, I'm not quite sure if it is, but to the extent that a variance is required, we do request a variance, so that the buildings remain aesthetically identical.
Yes.
And if a variance is required, that variance caused by the condition of the site, that makes a variance necessary. As said for the municipal and things. The riverwalk is an immutable object, correct?
Yes.
That's there. You're trying to picture a building in, on your site, with the riverwalk being property over which you have no control, is that correct?
Well, we don't have control over it.
Yeah, I have control over it because it's a visibly owned.
Oh, yes.
Structure, right?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
By the consequence of that existing feature, there is a reason why your buildings need a variance otherwise would not be aesthetically identical, is that correct?
Correct.
I have no further questions.
You could build a smaller deck.
Correct. Well, the answer to that is.
As part of your additional testimony, you can have a rendering of north side. As part of your additional proof.
Well, right now, I don't have a rendering in front of me, so if the board were to require a rendering, our client would bring in a rendering, or submit a rendering as a condition of the approval. But as this witness was testifying to this, in order to have these buildings be identical by way of both aesthetic look and size of units, a variance is required at the east end of the building. Where it's not required, I can do further to the west, because the problem with lighting. I understand that part, on his testimony.
We would be willing, originally, we were hoping to have ten-foot decks, we would be willing to have the decks at eight feet, if the board would agree with that, if we needed variance for two feet. if we needed variance for two feet. That's something we discussed. We didn't realize that.
I think a rendering or a picture would help, because certainly you want a deck to be useful and aesthetically pleasing, so you want it, you want it. You also have to, you know, if you need a variance, then you'll need a variance. And that's something that should be fleshed out.
I would ask just a couple of quick questions if I could of the applicant. Obviously, to the north, your property is the client property, correct?
Correct.
There are no residences there?
No.
Can you see any impact having the decks, ten feet, let's take your ten feet, vary it to this point in variance, any negative impact upon the property that's actually fronting on the river as opposed to your property? Any negative impacts, as you can see?
No.
Does that add to the value of this property in terms of aesthetically pleasing design? Derek? I sometimes ask the very obvious questions, so you give a very obvious answer.
If you live in a unit such as that, living on the river, you at least maybe want to, you know, have a cup of coffee, read the paper. And it's definitely.
And in your.
Any residents living there would probably quite enjoy it.
And in terms of development of the site, I'm assuming you've developed sites with raised decks on upper levels. What is a useful size for residential deck?
A useful size?
Two feet probably doesn't give you much to go look out of.
No, 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 I understand.
A useful size, he means an area in which someone will actually walk out, sit down, have a chair, have tables, have a lounge here for a house.
Well, as Greg and I have discussed, we think it would be, that would be sufficient to be our lease.
I just want to remember, we feel much more comfortable seeing a rendering of this.
If you want to give me five minutes, if you want to give me five minutes, I'll go home. I have a rendering for you. Well, probably less than that to go home and get it. I have a rendering.
Do you want to take a pre-adjournment so the board can.
Yeah, let's do that.
Pre-adjournment, mark the time at eight twenty-five.
Get back in five minutes.
Back on record, back on record. Please mark two exhibits we have as provisions. It needs presentation here.
Well, I think this was D four.
D four. Mark A. It's A, A five will be the more than elevation. A six. Do you need A six, council? No. I guess someone just basically give verbiage as to what we're looking at in A five.
Your architect?
Mark and Greg?
Mark. I'm going to show you A five.
Correct.
What does A five represent?
It is a rendering of the rear elevation showing the multiple deck platforms on the upper level residences and how it covers the ground floor level as well.
And I have no further questions.
Okay. Just asked to pass that up to the board. Take it.
The third floor give a deck as well?
No.
The, the, the third floor would be bedrooms and that second floor deck would be off the, off the living room. So the way the board plan would be, you'd have the kitchen, the kitchen, living room and after your deck.
So the upstairs is dual levels.
Correct.
I don't understand this, honestly.
We've run it twice, but whatever.
So we're still trying to, but here's how I see my job as your council. I do not see a provision for a deck in the Seaport Village redevelopment area. Council's represented to me, you know, these items were presented. I don't have in our resolution from the last time any reference to any decks or those types of things. I can't really find a section in the redevelopment area that discusses decks on the upper levels. We do have some provisions in the Seaport redevelopment plan, where we talk about zero setback lines, in which you can build all the way up to the property. However, in this instance, I see this not necessarily as a principal structure, but as an accessory structure to the principal building. And since it's not addressed, you know, one view can be that it's not permitted. There isn't that sweeping language in the Seaport redevelopment area we have served on. We don't really have a line of accessory structures that are identified. I look then to our regular development regulations and see that, I think you can have into the rear yard up to a six foot above the floor. But in this instance, I can, I understand the applicant's rationale for wanting to have a nice mobile deck area, overlook from the Shark River. And you can weigh the impact that will have on the property or to the door, Mr. Klein's property, whether or not aesthetically that that fits in the design scheme that's proposed for the Seaport redevelopment area. I think one of the other issues that you had here in the development in this was originally there was going to be a commercial area on that rear area to allow patrons to go out. And if anything, probably delineate that area, that outside area, with the ability to have enough for it to use it. So I, the applicant has reserved its right in his notes to get any variance, we have that defined in the course of viewing this, I think, I think out of abundance of caution, the easier way to do it is not to ignore the issue, but to address it. I'm sure council will reserve its right to challenge my decision that a variance is needed. But I think the issue, of course, in this instance is to simply perceive by way of variance and say, has the applicant, or the accessory structure, approved, is for to get a variance to allow the structure to go greater than six feet. As to what they want to ask for eight or ten, that's up to you. The only concerns I see in this instance is as you get to the, I guess, as you get further to the, to the end of the property, we're coming closer to the, oh, sorry about that, you don't need my comment on that. There's a greater depth to the property, if you will, as you travel from the east to the west, to the left side of the property.
Regardless of that depth, it's still, if six feet, if they go beyond six feet.
I, I think that's an easy way to address it, and I don't know what the. I think we'd require a variance, the applicant's reserve to check the Seaport variance.
Can you comment on this? What is the setback from the edge of the property to the deck plan?
I think the, the architect should probably address that, it's one of the variants of saying ones that are definitely.
At, at the most narrow, which would be the east building. Because that's how we, so what would be the larger variance, if a variance is required, what would be the variance that is requested? How far would the setback be? You know, those numbers are not being brought up.
Well, again, I won't speak for the applicant, but I can explain, from the corner of the building to the end of the property line, what that distance is, probably give you a distance that it from the back, or doesn't to where the end of the deck would be. Where are we?
Yeah, so the, at the corner that we're all talking about, that's the closest to the property line, the distance from the corner of the building to that property line is sixteen point eight-six feet. That's not, you know, there's, like we said before, there's no setback. So even though the deck is protruding out ten feet from the building, which brings it to six point eight-six feet from that property line, it's not actually entering into setback.
So there's no additional setback issue, there's no setback variance that would be required?
Right, if we wanted to build the building, we could have built it technically to the property line.
Your ordinance in the Seaport redevelopment class were zero setback to the rear. That's, and Aaron is the anomaly, you could build the whole building up to the edge. You wouldn't do it here because you have changes and alterations, but you technically put the whole building right up to that property.
The common sense says then, they're, they're good. I mean, if they can build a building to the line. And the deck will be on the ground, it'll be above everyone's head and.
And the only thing on the ground level will be the supporting structure.
Right.
The base and the pole, as you see.
And it'll be completely on their property.
Yes.
So they're really not doing any, really any harm, and the thing is beautiful, and to tell you the truth, if I was going to buy one, I would certainly want a rear view.
So it rose.
Oh, yeah, sure.
A point of clarification, there is no opening to the south in, in any of these units, there are these first floor units, you don't have windows or anything from this depiction here, you don't show the windows on the south side of the building.
On the ground floor units, no, because these are, these entrances that are to the upper story units. There is one of the central units that's, if this is the entrance to the one ground floor unit, there's another one on the other side to the other ground floor unit, and through the center is the entrance to that third ground floor unit. And all the rest of these doorways are to the upper level and to a, a mechanic.
One of the things that we, we tried to work with Brian with this is that, especially with the opportunity for sixteen residential units, we wanted to have sixteen units with water views, six ground floor, ten second, third floor units, every, every unit has, we want to have a water view, take, take a beautiful look at, at Shark River, the marina, everything that goes on there, like that's the, you know, with the proximity to the railroad track, the railroad bridge, we thought that, that water view straight up would basically be best for buyers, for the borough and everything, so we wanted, you know, to take, you know, as, you know, the, the least amount of units, not to overbuild the project, but yet to have enough to, you know, that everybody did that standard water view.
So the ground floor floor units will have windows on the side of the building and then the north side of the building. But there'll be decking above.
Correct, and there'll be access from the ground floor units out through a door to that under deck space for their private.
The bottom units won't have windows on the street end.
Correct.
But they'll have enough open floor plan where the way that Brian did them is, is that, that, that you, you, if you're in your living room, you'd have, you have water view and your master bedroom, you'd have a water view. So you'd still have water view, you wouldn't have a street view, but you'd have water view from your master bedroom and water view from, water view from your living room to get out to that patio. So again, it's first floor, but, but you still would have that water view.
What is the pricing on the units?
We'd love to have, we'd love to have that answer.
I'm wondering what the difference is with the ground floor, you know?
We, we anticipate the, the ground, well, we anticipate square foot price for the units that we're hoping for. We anticipate probably thirty percent less for a downstairs unit, at least thirty percent less for the flats, because again, even though the two bedrooms, you have eighteen hundred square foot, two bedrooms, second, third floor stacked unit, first level is twelve fifty to thirteen hundred, so you're getting roughly thirty percent less square footage, you know, on the, on the down, on the downside.
And I take it no lawyers are involved in that?
No, no.
Is this a pilot over there?
No. Actually, I was going to make a comment that to effect, I, I think a lot of, I know everyone's lived in town for a long time, as Greg and I have, and I think people forget that the Ice House actually occupied that property a long time. And when Greg and I originally got involved to do this deal, our parts are really, you know, really determine an area that was really dilapidated and, you know, just a really, almost like ironbound feeling, right?
Absolutely.
And our part, when we got originally involved here, we really wanted to do this, you know, to really improve the area, and we've never asked once for a pilot. And we've always gone here for clean, ratable for the borough. And we started this in two thousand eleven. As we were first starting.
Even at Westport, when, when Greg and I did the fifth pilot over committee, which was the first of us flying in town, we didn't ask for a pilot or any tax abatements or, or whatnot, we wanted to do what we felt was good for us as developers and good for the borough, so.
More importantly, not to remind you, we live in town. We're just trying to protect our own interests, like deep residence, we're not looking to have the town air away. You know, we're trying to break some of the borough, you know, try to be partners.
Well, I think the board is okay with overhang, it's just, it's just, I think we're hung up on the footage.
Well, Chairman, based upon the ordinance and that, as the buyer indicated, you can build a building right to the edge of the property. Here, they're not building a building, they're building a, an open structure as part, as you go part of the building, that's not going all the way to the property line. It's setback, and it's setback widened as you go from east to west. So in my opinion, I don't think a variance is necessary. If the variance is necessary, our client requests a variance to, to, ten feet?
Although they could build, they could have built their building right up to the edge of the property. So they're creating by putting half the building back, leaving a lot of open space and reducing the bulk of the building. And I, I think you take that into consideration, plus the fact that there is no requirement to have any setback, that no variance is required, and I would request that this board grant the approval of a reclining seat.
What's the width of each, oh, right?
The width? The porch, the porch area? Well, well, it was five meters, each building's a hundred feet long, so to be like twenty feet, you know, give, you know, more or less to put the fencing, probably lose a foot on each one, probably nineteen feet.
It would be the equivalent of your usual porch size on residential, huh? When you think about what you usually do. Anyone? Maybe anyone? So we'll be open to public on decision, I'm sorry, sorry, we had a wonderful, public on decision. Uh, well, is there any other question on the board, Mr. Kovats? Mr. Benizi? Okay, okay, and at this point, it's up to the public. So if you have a comment, please step forward to the mic and provide your name and address for the board.
I'm here at my ground, I remember our departments, it looks beautiful, I think it's great idea and everything like that, but I do have three major concerns. Our fire department, as it stands now, has come before the council and has said that their equipment and their manpower and their buildings are not up to what they would think is acceptable to help the whole town as it stands now. To continue with these buildings that are three stories high and have no access for a fire truck to go around, I don't think is responsible for the planning board at this time. My other concern is the school. If you're bringing in all these bedrooms and all these houses, and you're bringing in children, and a town is only as good as it's sold, no matter what the price value or the view is. Overcrowding in the school, the school structure itself, the class sizes, you're bringing in all of this. And to my own heart, environmentally, climate change is real, despite whatever anybody says, and to put a, a structure like that on the waterfront, we saw what happened in Sandy, I wasn't here, I, I've only, you know, I've only been here a couple years, my family goes back a hundred years, but I've only been around, a year round residence for the last five years, so I wasn't here, but I can't imagine what we're thinking when we're putting up so much construction so close to the water and such a brimful of signs. Thank you.
Can I just, the elementary school has fewer students in it now than it did twenty years ago.
The structure of the building, I've been in the port of Eddie.
The population of the students at Delmar Elementary is less than it was twenty years ago. I've been speaking with the fire department... Excuse me?
I understand that the heating system, they had to close the school for a day.
As I said, the school has fewer students than it did twenty years ago. So it's not like we're overcrowded in school at all. I've been speaking with our fire department, and they would like newer equipment, but they have assured me that they can handle any of the buildings in town, they can handle the Rio Towers, which is nine stories, the senior citizen building, six stories.
But they were here, the council meeting, and they were asking, they said, the man said, it was, it was a very, it was a very concerning situation. They're, and they're all volunteers, on top of all that. I think the burden that we're putting on our fire department, I, I, I don't object essentially to what's happening, I just think we should do it responsibly. As a town, you're taking the whole town in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one there, we're going to close the public portion of the meeting, and I'm going to ask for more comments. Mr. Mayor, sorry.
All right, based on the evidence that's been provided by the applicants and their comments, I, I don't really have a problem. I guess there is a question a little bit about the setback and so forth, but given what they represented, or the hardship it was, I have no problem with that. If a variance is required, I would agree to that variance as well, so.
Okay.
Considering that they could build right up to that rear property line, I really don't have a problem with the decking on the second floor.
Mr. Reynolds?
Having remembered the Ice House for the forty years I've been in Delmar, this is a welcome change. Thank you guys for doing this.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes to the application and yes to the variance. Personally, I'd like to see eight feet. If I was living in a downstairs unit and not having windows all around, especially that middle downstairs unit, where your own windows are to, to the north, and then having a ten foot overhang of, of those windows, I'm not sure how desirable that unit will be, but that's certainly up to the owners. But other than that, I'm finding the application.
Mayor?
I'm, I'm glad that we do not have a, a commercial on the first floor, especially in that area, I think it would create too much intensity over there. I know it, yes to the application and yes to a variance if needed.
Mr. Burke?
I agree with the application a hundred percent, I think it's aesthetically pleasing, I would agree to a variance up to ten feet, if that's, that's what's necessary, and I'm very pleased that this is not a pilot project.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, I feel the same, project and the end of the variance.
Mr. Forte, you'd like to comment?
No comments, I, I think it's a, it's a good proposal, and I, I hope it goes through. As far as the ten foot decks and the fact that you don't need a setback, ten foot is fine, I don't have a problem with that.
And I'm all favoring the project also, you know, and, and if Mr. Kovats should discover at some point in the future that a variance is needed, that you have to come back? Well, I, I would, I would say that you would grant that variance to see me as part of the application, unless I'm misunderstanding what the app of the settings, I believe the app will say two things. I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Kovats that a variance is needed, but if a variance is needed, we make that application, I, I would suggest that you vote for the variance, if that's, if, if you are in favor of that, and also the technical waivers, it wasn't really just with the technical waivers of the IAS and the stormwater, which had submitted part of the application that commercial in the amount, but they're not recently deposed. But I would think this is, this is where we would vote for the variance at this point. I think that's the, that's the conservative course of action. I'm also happy that with the elimination of the commercial establishment, you're going to be increasing the, the grass areas, eliminating the pavers. I know someone, someone commented at the last meeting that you were here, that this was going to be like a Antucket type of little building, I'm very pleased with that comment, and that's, that's a look. Also, Mr. Ruzi, I'm, I'm very familiar with some of your buildings, and you do a fabulous job, so anything you're involved with, I'm sure it's going to be beautiful, so I'm in favor. Mr. Kovats, could you please summarize for us?
Yes, this is an application for a rented preliminary final site with approval to allow for the residential structure of three stories, total bedrooms at the site of sixteen. I'll frame it as also requesting various relief for replacement of a rear deck as depicted in A five, and the technical waivers by way of the environmental impact statement as well as the stormwater management. I've heard the testimony in this instance, a yes or is the favor of the applicant, and I think at this point, time is spreading as a ten foot variance would be, would be enough, okay?
Is there motion to move the application? Go over it, for a second.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
At this time, and once again, I'll put the meeting up to the public, or any other planning board issues other than the application discussed tonight. Meeting done.